Let us move now to the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority. Mr. Kasakian, if you could call the roll for the council.
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here.
And for the agency. Agency members, Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
For the authority.
Authority members, Drayman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Spazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, could we...
Certainly.
Could we have the item, please?
The agenda for the June 17, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, June 12, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item today is Director of Community Development and Housing and Development Services, joining to present to you the proposed smoking prohibitions and limitations on secondhand smoke.
Okay. And 1A?
And 1A is a council motion providing direction to staff.
And 1B is?
1, second I'm... Still writing. At B is an agency motion directing staff to prepare an amendment to the rules and regulations contained in the Declaration of Reciprocal Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions and Easements for the Americana brand to incorporate prohibition of smoking in the agency-owned open space, and that is all before you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. All right. Mr. City Manager, who are we going to with the report?
Mr. Mayor, the lucky administrator to give you a brief staff report is Sam Engel. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mayor Drayman, Chair Yusefian, Chair Najarian, members of the City Council, Housing Authority, and Redevelopment Agency. Tonight, we're considering a draft ordinance revising Chapter 8.52 of Municipal Code, which would expand the limitation on smoking in locations where secondhand smoke might affect other individuals. This is being presented at a joint meeting of all three bodies because certain provisions could impact properties and projects under the jurisdiction of the Redevelopment Agency, and other provisions could set housing policy for the city. It was important for the issues to be identified and addressed in a common forum. Realizing that the City Council expressed a desire that this meeting serve as a forum for community feedback on this issue, staff has worked hard to spread the word about tonight's meeting. We can provide greater detail on this later on if you need that. Earlier in the meeting, we distributed to a letter that we just received today from Dr. Jonathan Fielding, who is the Director of the Department of Public Health for the County of Los Angeles and also the county's Chief Health Officer, who contacted us in response to this outreach effort. Dr. Fielding's letter lists the various medical reasons that might justify a community taking steps to lower the exposure of its residents, workers, and guests to secondhand smoke. We felt this letter might prove helpful to the council's consideration of this issue, so that's why we presented it to you today. The draft ordinance that's before you tonight takes a comprehensive approach to dealing with secondhand smoke, both in terms of its prohibitions and its specifications where smoking might be permitted. For your consideration and how we approach the ordinance, there's really four components that are a part of it. The first component considers restrictions for smoking on public property. The second component deals with restrictions on smoking in or on private property that is open and accessible to the public. The third component deals with restrictions on smoking in multi-unit housing. And the fourth component really deals with all the miscellaneous provisions that are a part of a comprehensive ordinance. All of those are part of the written report, and I'm not going to talk about those tonight, but you have all of that already. In summary, it's important to note that while the ordinance is comprehensive in scope, it does not comprehensively prohibit smoking. Smoking is still permitted in many locations, as noted in its purpose, and I want to read this in the record. "It is the attempt of the ordinance to strike a reasonable balance between smokers and others who desire to breathe smoke-free air, while recognizing that only 15 percent of the population are smokers." Finally, one last point before I complete my report. The council asks for specific information from our adjoining cities, and I would like to let everybody know about those things. Specifically, the council asks about Burbank and Pasadena, and I'm going to read directly from the stuff that I prepared for you tonight. Burbank has already adopted a smoke-free ordinance, and it has been in place now for them for a little over, almost 18 months. July 1, it will be 18 months. They gave us some reports on how they felt it had been successful in doing exactly what they intended to do, which was provide healthy open space in their community. They had a couple of blips that they felt, and first off was they felt that while they focused on education, if they were to go back and do it over again, they would focus their education on visitors to the community. They felt that members of their community got it really quick, and that where they had the issues in terms of people adjusting to their new regulations was with people who were coming to the city for the first time or visiting from out of town who may not be familiar. Second of all, they already limit smoking in the common areas of multifamily units a little bit less severely than the ordinance that is before you tonight, but not much. Both Burbank and Pasadena have told us that they intend to address smoking in multi-unit housing, similar to what the ordinance in front of you does. Burbank says that they will be tackling the issue in their next revise of their smoking ordinance, which they estimate will be in front of their council within the next six months. As I noted before, they already limit smoking in the common areas of multi-unit buildings. Last but not least, I want to stress that Burbank's emphasis was on education as a part of their enforcement. They went so far as to hire someone, which was a smoking educator, to work with businesses, business owners, and visitors to their commercial areas. They felt that that was the key to community acceptance of their new regulations. And with that, everything else that was a part of this was in the written report and will be available to answer questions as you continue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Let me again ask my colleagues whether they'd like to make some opening comments before we go to the public and then come back, or whether you would like to just go directly through. And I should explain, by the way, before we do that, because this doesn't happen that often, that if you're in the audience or tuning in, that you see some faces that may not be quite as familiar to you up here on the dais. It's because we are in a joint meeting of the council, the Housing Authority, which includes members not on the City Council, and the Redevelopment Agency. So that's why you're seeing some faces up here, Mr. Mincy and Mr. Spazian, who you don't normally see perhaps at council meetings in the evening. You'd see them in the afternoon if you were to tune into our Housing Authority meetings. Okay? So, let me go to my colleagues and ask if they have any... Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I just have a question from Sam. You mentioned about Burbank and Pasadena. You talked all about Burbank, didn't say anything about Pasadena. Unless it's the same thing as Burbank?
Councilman Yusefian, Pasadena City Council... There used to be a city commission. Pasadena City Council met in May, and they did what you're doing tonight. They directed staff to come back, or actually what you did in March. They directed staff to come back with an ordinance. Their ordinance was... Their council directed them to come back with a comprehensive ordinance. They will be presenting that to councils, I understand it, in August sometime.
But they haven't adopted any?
No. They intended... What they told us when we asked them is it is a comprehensive ordinance, very similar to what you got tonight, with the exception that it doesn't actually deal with the percentage of units being declared non-smoking.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Spazian, any comments before we go to the public?
No.
Mr. Mincy. Mr. Yusefian. All right. Let's go to the public. Let's start with Elaine Alexander, followed by Phyllis Meisler.
Mayor Drayman.
How are you?
Council members and staff. My name is Elaine Alexander. I have lived in Glendale for most of my life, and even though I never smoked, less than 10 years ago, I was diagnosed with asthma. Recent surveys involving Glendale have shown that asthma rates in our city jumped between 40 percent and 105 percent, depending on age, between 2004 and 2007. Due to the harmful effects of secondhand smoke, which have been proven, I'm urging you to enact an anti-smoking ordinance in line with those already existing in Burbank, Calabasas, and Santa Monica, as well as those proposed in Pasadena and other Southern California cities. The ordinance should at least include restaurants, waiting lines, bus stops, public buildings, offices, public open space such as farmers' markets, as well as 20 feet from public areas. The reason for anti-smoking ordinance are obvious. The reduction in health risk to us, as well as our children and grandchildren, reduction of fire danger in a known hazard area, and the reduction of already existing litter problems. There is absolutely no reason not to enact, and more importantly, enforce, an anti-smoking ordinance in the city of Glendale. Because of what I have outlined above, my only question to you would be, why has it taken so long? Since you were elected to represent the citizens of Glendale, and our health, safety, and welfare are of primary concern to you, I'm sure you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phyllis Meisler, followed by Vivian Rowan.
Mayor Drayman and rest of the council members, thank you for this opportunity to address this body. I want to start out by saying, and don't hurt me, okay, that I am actually speaking against adoption of this ordinance. And I want to tell you my background. I'm a mental health professional, so I really have a different perspective perhaps, although I am a health professional in that sense, but coming from a different angle on all this. And that I worked extensively with children and adolescents and their families primarily in the prevention of child abuse. I want to thank this coalition for healthier community there for exposing a big lie in the paper. Actually, their lie exposes itself, and that is regarding asthma. It claims that asthma has increased for the three or four years between 2004 and the present, has gone up 40 percent for those 20 years old and younger, and up 105 percent for those 25 to 64. However, the fact is, smoking has decreased in this country over the last 20 years, and has actually gone down from over 50 percent of the population smoking to today, less than 25 percent. I know you mentioned 15 percent, but I've seen figures maybe around 30 percent for Glendale. So, you would expect that with the decrease in smoking, there would have been a concomitant, consistent, or decrease of asthma. Why yet you see a decrease in smoking that's significant and a significant increase in asthma? In other words, I don't think you can say there's a one-to-one correlation. In fact, you get the opposite. There seems to be an inverse proportional relationship between the two factors. And so, I have to take a step back and think perhaps there are other factors involved in illness and asthma. And I want to refer, actually, I'd like to refer to some facts. I want to refer the committee to the four documentary, film documentary, unnatural causes. And I've brought something to submit to the committee in their consideration. These film detail studies that were done for 30 years.
Meisler, I have to ask you to conclude.
Okay.
If you do have something for the council, you may leave it with the city clerk.
Yes, of course, and it speaks to heart disease as well. And I want to ask, first of all, these people who are sensitive to smoke also said this...
Ma'am, I have to ask you to conclude. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
I'm asking the council, please, not to adopt this ordinance, and not to turn our community into that where neighbors spies our neighbor and can perhaps have the police knock on their door at 2:00, suspecting someone had a cigarette in their bathroom.
Ma'am, I have to stop you there, but I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Vivian Rowan, followed by David Reagan-George.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Rowan.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me just interrupt you for a moment. I've had a request, and it's a good one. If I could ask you all to turn off your phones and pagers and cellphones... Does anybody still have a pager? Anyway, phones and pagers and cellphones, we'll just get that housekeeping out of the way now. Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry. Let's start your time over.
Oh, my name is Vivian Rowan. I am a Glendale resident and live at Chauva Chase Drive, and I'm also a volunteer for the Los Angeles County Division of the American Heart Association. I'll be brief with my comments, but I want to make sure that I stress to you the fact that imposing regulation on outdoor smoking is important and the next and the most logical step in protecting Glendale residents from the effects secondhand to smoke. The American Heart Association congratulates the city of Glendale for most recently taking the needed steps in recognizing the need to protect its residents and visitors from exposure to the danger of the secondhand smoke. Regulating smoking in public places is an important step toward changing people's attitude towards smoking and discouraging the dangerous behavior of tobacco used near the non-tobacco user like our children. On behalf of the American Heart Association, we thank you, the mayor, and the rest of the city council, for your support on tobacco control issues. Good evening.
Thank you. David Reagan-George, followed by Esther Schiller.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, other officials. My wife and I are residents of...
Name for the record, please. State your name for the record.
My name is David Reagan-George. My wife and I are residents of Glendale. We've been bagging Glendale for a couple of years. We were away for 10 years, but we lived in Glendale before that. We really love Glendale, and we just wanted to come to throw our support behind the adoption of these non-smoking ordinances. We actually have started to shop and go to restaurants and things like that in Burbank because a lot of times when we're walking through the streets of Glendale, we end up walking through clouds of smoke. And my wife has asthma. The other woman talked about there being perhaps not a direct relation between smoking causing asthma, but that to us is irrelevant because smoking triggers asthma. And in fact, we have a problem in our building where we live because we just actually, to come here, walked out through a cloud of smoke. Somebody was smoking in the courtyard. They've been asked not to, but they do it anyway. My wife is wheezing right now because she was walking through smoke. So, I think there's actually an economic benefit to Glendale to make the... pass these smoking ordinances because I know that just the two of us, we no longer do as much business in Glendale because we can go to Burbank where the smoking ordinances have been... The non-smoking ordinances have been passed. And also because of our experience with our building and people smoking in the courtyard and our trouble with that, I think that those ordinances should be passed as well for the multi-unit buildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Esther Schiller, followed by Marlene Gomez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and community members. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm the Executive Director of Safe Smoke-Free Air for Everyone. Our organization was founded in 1992 by people who were made very sick by tobacco smoke where they worked. We've provided a packet for you this evening. The packet includes the results from our survey of 251 Glendale apartment residents, and a copy also of our results from surveys of apartment residents in the city of Los Angeles. The survey results in both cities are remarkably similar. In Glendale, 79.3 percent of survey respondents said they would prefer to live in the non-smoking part of a building. That included 32.9 percent of current tobacco users and 99 percent of non-tobacco users. 74 percent said they would prefer to live in a completely smoke-free building. Other materials in the packet include a call to action from the Campaign for Smoke-Free Choice in Multi-Unit Housing, which consists of... It's a coalition that consists of the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, and many other groups. This coalition suggests that non-smoking sections need to be available in apartments just as they are in hotels, especially so that people with chronic illnesses can be accommodated. And that also, very important, is that prospective tenants need to be informed before they move in where the smoking permitted units are located and where the designated outdoor smoking area, if there is one, is located. Also, the members of the coalition suggest that involuntary exposure to tobacco smoke should be declared a nuisance by city councils. Also in the packet is a letter from the Armenian Relief Society Social Services, which expresses support for the concept of improving the quality of life in the city of Glendale by adopting policies which more strongly regulate the use of tobacco products in outer public areas and in multi-unit housing. Thank you so much, and we're available for questions.
Thank you. Marlene Gomez, followed by Jason Weber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, and the community and staff. My name is Marlene Gomez. I am the Project Director of Safe Smoke-Free Air for Everyone. I'm going to follow up on some of the statistics that we found in the surveys conducted among the Glendale residents. The survey results again were remarkably similar to surveys conducted in the city of Los Angeles and other cities. More than one-third of respondents said they had tobacco smoke drifting into their apartment within the last year. Of those, almost half said they had someone they lived with that has a medical condition that could be made worse when exposed to secondhand smoke. Also, most of these people have children or senior citizens in their apartment homes, and over 70 percent do not allow smoking in their home at this point in time. Some said the smoke came from outdoors, and some said it came from another unit. Of these, only 10 percent complained to the person smoking, and only 6 percent complained to management of the building, which means that many of these management owners know that there's a problem in the building. Why do so few people complain? There is a myth that in society that there's some kind of right to smoke, but there is no right to smoke. It is a choice, usually taken in the teenage years when the decision-making sections of young brains are not fully developed. The tobacco industry would like us to believe that smoking is a legal right, but it is merely a choice, and then it becomes an addiction. Also, the places where people smoke, even in their own apartments, can be regulated because the courts have found that their smoking is not a privacy right. Finally, 80.5 percent of respondents of our survey support restrictions of smoking in multi-unit housing, and a large percentage said that these laws should also apply to existing in new buildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Weber, followed by Kimberly Sinclair.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jason Weber. I've been living in Glendale for about three years. In this January, we had some new neighbors move in who smoke heavily. It leaks through our floors and fills up the room that we... Our family room where we stay. We, in the middle of winter, had to open all our windows, and we couldn't use the heat because it pulled the air from the downstairs up into our bedrooms, so we couldn't sleep. So, we slept several nights with the windows open and no heat. Now, it's summer, they smoke outside, and we can't open the windows at all because the smoke comes in and chokes us. We talked to the management at the apartment, and they said there's nothing they can do because there's no legal restraints at all. We've spent hundreds of dollars on filters. It costs us... It's expensive to buy them, and the filters themselves cost us hundreds of dollars every six months. I just want to point out that it does affect not only outdoors, but people in their own homes. We have nowhere to go. We have nowhere to sleep that we can be free from smoke. And I just wish to find any way that you can to help us with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Kimberly Sinclair, followed by Janice Chow.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kimberly Sinclair, and as you know, I teach health and psychology over at Glendale High School. And my students could not be here today because they're in the midst of finals and they're graduating this Thursday. But I wanted to share with you some things that happened in my class. I have a petition that's signed here by some of the 18-year-old students that I'm going to present to all of you. And today, this morning, I had one student who said, "Oh, okay, I'll sign it." And then the other student said, "Well, why are you going to sign that?" And the kid said... First kid turned to the second kid and said, "Well, smoking is bad for you. Everybody knows that." And then he signed it, and then the kid that hassled him about signing it also signed it. And I was talking to my class about Burbank, and the perception from my students is that no one can smoke anywhere in Burbank. And I tried to correct that with them and say, "No, you know, it's not quite everywhere in Burbank." And they said, "Oh, no. You can't smoke anywhere in Burbank because my friend got a ticket." And then they were also told me about another time where somebody else they knew got a ticket in the outdoor smoking, in the outdoor dining. And lastly, I just want to end with, I was talking to my classes about, well, you know, Glendale is thinking about doing something similar to what Burbank did, and one of my freshmen said, "Oh, my God, they should do that at the Americana." So, great minds think alike. So, I want to present this to you. So, here you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Janice Chow, followed by Anaheet Panijan.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman and council members. My name is Janice Chow with the American Cancer Society. The American Cancer Society applauds your extended effort in taking a bold step forward in protecting the health of Glendale from secondhand smoke. The proven health dangers of secondhand smoke are clear and well-known. Secondhand smoke contains over 4,000 known human carcinogens that cause cancer. Can you believe that every year, over 3,000 non-smoking adults in the United States will die of lung cancer from breathing the smoke of someone else's cigarettes? Scientific studies from government agencies show the dangers of secondhand smoke are real. The 2006 U.S. Surgeon General's report states that secondhand smoke is a serious health hazard and that there is no risk-free level of exposure. In addition, the California Air Resources Board has identified secondhand smoke as a toxic air contaminant. The simple truth is that tobacco use continues to be the most preventable cause of death. Smoking is responsible for approximately 85 percent of lung cancer deaths and 30 percent of cancer-related deaths. Lung cancer alone kills 14,000 Californians each year. That's more than prostate, breast, and colon cancer combined. To prevent thousands of tobacco-related cancers and deaths, tobacco use must come down significantly. This is the reason why the American Cancer Society is a leading advocate for the restrictions proposed in your draft ordinance tonight. By retaining the proposed ordinance in its current form as much as possible, you will be taking great steps at truly creating a healthier community, making Glendale a desirable place for people to live and patronize. We applaud your strong leadership and dedication in making the health of your community a priority, protecting non-smokers, and setting a healthy example for other cities to follow. The American Cancer Society is a nationwide community-based voluntary health organization that's dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anaheet Panijan, followed by Harvey Pearson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Drayman, members of the City Council, staff, and the guests. My name is Anaheet Panijan. I'm here today to support the issue of limitation on smoking, not only in public places, but also the common areas of the residential apartment building. Smoking is the most common cause. Long-term exposure to the tobacco smoke irritates lung, causing to the disease. The orders of the secondhand smoke cause a nuisance and annoyance to non-smoker when enclosed proximity to people who are smoking. I believe that Glendale is a great place to live and work. That is up to each of us to keep the city's smoke-free air. Glendale... Sorry. I think it is necessary to develop a proposed set of regulations as a new ordinance, which is in the best interest of the resident health. It's also in the best interest of community owners. The property owners can provide designated outdoor smoking area. The space should be whatever is in ordinance in 20 or 15 years. The space should be whatever is in ordinance 20 or 15 feet away from the window and door as a common area because we have been affected from my neighbors many years of secondhand smoke. My concern today is to support this new ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Harvey Pearson, followed by Igor Kagan.
Councilman, my name's Harvey Pearson. Officially, I live in Los Feliz. The last 30 years, half my time has been spent in Glendale. I have a very good friend that lives in an apartment who could be well at risk of secondhand smoke coming from downstairs, just as it did for many, many years in my apartment in Los Feliz. And I think there was some statistic, 32% only seem to be that worried about it of non-smokers in apartments, but there could be a logical reason for that, and that since most people don't smoke, you have a pretty good chance when you live in an apartment building of not experiencing this terrible secondhand smoke. But if you're one of the unfortunate ones that's located right next to a heavy smoker or particularly right over a heavy smoker, then you'll understand. And you can only hope that the non-smokers that don't have that happen can think, "There but for the grace of God go I." So, that'll do for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. Alicia Lopez, followed by Cindy Estepona.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and community members. My name is Alicia Lopez, and I am the Chair of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Los Angeles County, which is comprised of over 70 agencies consisting of various community-based organizations and nonprofit agencies. I wanted to take a moment on behalf of the Coalition to applaud your leadership toward making Glendale a healthier city by considering the expansion of the limitations of smoking in public places in Glendale, including in multi-unit housing, for the agenda tonight. The Coalition encourages cities to limit smoking in outdoor public places as there is no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. Limiting exposure to secondhand smoke outdoors encourages young people not to smoke, as they do not see the behavior being modeled, and smokers are encouraged to quit because the smoke-free environment changes the social norm around smoking. The Coalition also encourages efforts to protect residents from exposure to secondhand smoke where they live, and recognizes that tobacco smoke can drift in apartment buildings from other units or from outside. It may enter through plumbing, cabinets, and closets, ceiling fans, fireplaces, ventilation systems, and under doors from hallways. It also may enter through windows and doors from residents smoking on patios, balconies, and in courtyards. In the packet provided to you by SAFE, there is a document developed by the California Environmental Protection Agency, which lists the many illnesses that can be caused by continual exposure to secondhand smoke. The other side of that document shows the percentage of the California population who already suffer from chronic illnesses, which can be made worse by exposure to tobacco smoke. People with disabilities account for 12.9% of the population in California, and only 14% of adults still smoke in the state. State and federal fair housing laws are supposed to provide that people with disabilities or chronic illnesses such as asthma or heart disease can use and enjoy their rented apartments. However, if there are no non-smoking sections in apartment buildings or non-smoking buildings, adults and children with these kinds of conditions cannot be accommodated. They are forced to move from building to building when a new neighbor moves in who happens to smoke. So again, the Coalition for Tobacco-Free L.A. County applauds your leadership with this very important public health initiative and looks forward to a healthier Glendale for residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Estepona, followed by Lori Collins.
I'm Igor Kagan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We lost you. I lost you, but we found you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency. My name is Igor Kagan. I'm with the American Lung Association of California. Smoke-free environments and clean, healthy air is a right for everyone. Adults and children with chronic illness like lung disease especially need the opportunity to live in non-smoking environments. Non-smoking sections and non-smoking apartment buildings will provide that opportunity. The proposed ordinance before you would require non-smoking sections and also provide legal support to apartment owners who want to make their buildings totally non-smoking. There is no law that prevents landlords from adopting no-smoking policies for their buildings, but many hesitate because they want that level of security with the law saying that they can actually do this. The proposed ordinance will protect tenants and landlords. It is especially important for prospective tenants to know before they commit to renting an apartment where non-smoking units and smoking permitted units are. Also, they need the security of knowing that no one will move into that adjacent unit and smoke in that unit. The proposed ordinance before you would require that kind of disclosure. Several cities in California have already begun to examine serious health issue of drifting tobacco smoke into multi-unit housing. The cities of Oakland and Albany have both adopted ordinances which require the landlord to disclose where smoking and non-smoking units are located. Calabasas, Novato, and Loma Linda have disclosure and also require non-smoking sections. These cities also grandfather existing tenants who smoke. This is done by requiring all tenants who wish to continue to smoke in their units to inform management by a certain date, so the burden of disclosure doesn't fall on management. An even greater number of cities have identified tobacco smoke as a nuisance, including Calabasas, Novato, Loma Linda, Dublin, and Belmont. We urge you to recognize the problem of drifting tobacco smoke in apartment, that drifting tobacco smoke in apartment is a serious health hazard, and we urge you to pass the strongest ordinance possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. And I apologize for getting past you there. Let's see, Ms. Estepona, followed by Lori Collins.
Hello, City Councilmembers. My name is Cindy Estepona. I have been a resident in Glendale for most of the time since 1978. I am an RN for 32 years, and I'm also a volunteer with the city cert team. And so I have a real commitment to participate in the betterment of the community and to try to do something positive in improving the neighborhoods. My family has been personally affected by cigarette smoke. When my twin sister and I were born, we went through nicotine withdrawal. That was not a choice. When my sister and I got to the teenage years, she chose to smoke. That was a choice. She now has emphysema and cancer and is in stage. I have never smoked, and I'm thankful for that. My only things that have affected me are asthma, but when I'm exposed to cigarette smoke, it will come on so suddenly that I have been, I have felt like my life is impending, like I'm going to die because I can't. I get into bronchospasms and can't get the air. So this is life-threatening. I feel very, very strongly in the right to choose to smoke and the right to choose not to be exposed to the smoke. I also have taken steps with neighbors to let them know what my health situation is and to respectfully ask them if they could smoke a little ways away from a shared patio where it would drift into my apartment and fill the whole apartment. My husband got number seven-gauge plastic and actually created a bubble inside of our living room when the people refused to smoke, stopped smoking outside when they knew it was creating severe breathing problems, because we believe in trying to live peacefully with our neighbors. So he tried that, and it cut down some. Fortunately, at this point, those neighbors have moved. We had talked with our landlord pleasantly. He said, he recommended we go to the police. We went to the police and gave our circumstances, asking for their assistance, and they said there was no way they could help us because there was nothing on the books. So even though I believe strongly in people's choice to smoke or not smoke, I think that looking at these issues and creating some guidelines would be very beneficial and create a much more peaceful environment.
Thank you. Lori Collins, followed by Greg Breer?
Ginnier.
Ginnier. Okay, that it wasn't an, all right, Ginnier. Thank you. Ms. Collins.
Good evening. My name's Lori Collins, and I'm here to speak on my behalf. I'm also here to speak on behalf of my sister. My sister was one of those 3,000 people who died, who's a non-smoker. She died of lung cancer in February. She left a child, eight, and she left a child, 10. So I have real firsthand experience about the devastating impacts of secondhand smoke. According to the Department of Health and Human Services, there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. According to the same report, separating smokers from non-smokers, cleaning the air, and ventilating buildings cannot eliminate secondhand smoke exposure. According to the American Lung and Cancer Association, almost 173,000 people are diagnosed with lung cancer every year, and it's a terrible diagnosis because 160,000 people die of lung cancer. You have the power, under your police powers, to enact this ordinance to protect the health and safety of the citizens of this city. Please do it. Please enact this ordinance. It's in the best interest of us all.
Thank you. Greg Ginnier, please, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman and members of the Council. My name is Greg Ginnier, and I'm a Glendale resident for about 10 years now. I want to point out a situation that's maybe kind of unique to a lot of people that my family faces. We live on Glenwood Road, adjacent to Hoover High School, and we live right on the corner across the street from Keppel and Toll School. And of course, the schools themselves are already smoke-free environments, but because of our proximity to the school, our yard and the sidewalks in front of our yard become sort of a extension of the school campus, if you will, with a lot of kids waiting there for pickup, a lot of parents waiting there at the end of the day to pick their kids up. And this becomes the de facto smoking area because the people can't smoke at the school. We even have during the day sometimes employees of the school and sometimes contractors that are working for the school that, since they can't smoke at the school, they come over and stand in front of our houses and smoke. So we would certainly like to see an ordinance that would address public areas like that because, as I understand now, we, I mean, I can ask people not to smoke, but it's not a real comfortable thing to do. And so I would certainly encourage a passage of this ordinance, which I think will help make Glendale a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman. Nancy Kent, followed by Erica Halchak.
My name's Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I do not like breathing secondhand smoke, including outside, and I encourage you to ban smoking wherever you think it's appropriate. By the way, last Friday, I noticed signs outside at the Americana that said it's a no-smoking area, and I think they said except in enclosed restaurant patios. Nice little brass signs, very classy. I would like to make a pitch for enforcement. The narrow passageway to Brand from the Orange Street Garage that's called the Chess Park is already officially a no-smoking area, but the few times I've been there, it is a smokers lounge. With that in mind, and also with what the last speaker just said in mind, I would also encourage you to provide some public places where people can smoke. There was a letter to the editor in the news press that suggested enclosed smoking kiosks. This is a very strong addiction, and regardless of what people's addictions are, smoking or drinking or going to city council meetings, they will do those addictions. With a specific area in mind, if you are willing to make the area east of the Central Library a no-smoking area, I hope that will be strictly enforced. Right now, the Conversation Pit in front of the library door is another smokers lounge with many children walking through it. May I suggest a very small smoking kiosk be built in the middle of the lawn that's between the library parking lot and the sidewalk at Harvard and Louise. Smokers will smoke, and I think that if you provide a clearly labeled, specific place for them to smoke, whether it's enclosed or not, it will make enforcement seem more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Erica Halchak, followed by Stephen Gaiagos.
Hello, my name's Erica Halchak. I'm here on behalf of the American Lung Association. I'm an intern there for the summer. I'm a current Masters in Public Health student at UCLA in the Environmental Health Sciences Program, and I just wanted to read you a couple of results from a recent study that came out May 2, 2008, by the University of California at San Francisco. According to the study, a 30-minute exposure to the level of secondhand smoke that one might normally inhale in an average bar setting was enough to result in blood vessel injury in young and otherwise healthy lifelong non-smokers. Compounding the injury to the blood vessels themselves, the exposure to smoke impedes the function of the body's natural repair mechanisms that are activated in the face of the blood vessel's injury, the researchers report, and many of these effects persisted 24 hours later. These results showed that brief exposure to real-world levels of passive smoke have strong and persistent consequences on the body's vascular system, and this is concluded by the researchers. So this shows that there is no safe level of secondhand smoke, and considering that many people don't eat in a 30-minute time period, this applies to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen Gaiagos, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the Glendale City Council. My name's Stephen Gaiagos. I am a resident of Glendale and was born here. So I'm very proud of my city and that this is a huge step forward for public health, not just for residents of Glendale, not just for residents of Southern California or Los Angeles County, but for the people who yearn to breathe free around this country and around the world. Yes, absolutely, you know, the secondhand smoke is bad inside, but it's also bad outside unless you're sitting in a wind tunnel that your napkin's been tied to and that you are in a seatbelt. Nearby outdoor smokers pollute lungs outdoors as much as they do indoors. As you know, it contains over 4,000 chemicals and that people that puff through a filter get pure stuff that contains twice as much tar and nicotine. Secondhand smoke kills over 53,000 in the United States and approximately 4,700 in California. The cost to California taxpayers from illnesses caused from tobacco use is around $6 billion annually. Since we have a third of the population in Los Angeles County, you would probably imagine that would be $2 billion in L.A. County, and we are the third-largest city in this county. Dr. William Feroni, former director of applied research for Philip Morris Incorporated, stated that dangerous chemicals from cigarette smoke can linger in the air, indoors or outdoors, for up to six hours after a cigarette has been extinguished. A 2007 Stanford University study states, "If you are at a sidewalk café," as we have many here in Glendale, "and you sit within 18 inches of a person who smokes two cigarettes over the course of an hour," which is not unlikely to happen here in Glendale, "your exposure to secondhand smoke could be the same as if you sat one hour inside a tavern filled with smokers." Secondhand smoke steals the clean air that's meant for everyone to breathe. Secondhand smoke steals the futures of our children who are exposed to it. Secondhand smoke steals the lives of babies sleeping in cribs. Nicotine addiction is what smoking is, and that addiction is lighting up cigarettes Nicotine addiction is what smoking is, and that addiction is lighting up cigarettes in the presence of other people with no regard for their safety. Nicotine addiction is assuming one has the right to grow, manufacturing cell tobacco in spite of the fact that it kills people. And addiction is assuming one has the right to break federal, state, and local laws without paying the consequences. We are the people who are here to speak up in defending our right to breathe clean, healthy air. The city of Los Angeles has just, Councilman Smith has just introduced a motion to ban smoking in outdoor dining areas, and I made copies for members of the council and staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaiagos. Margaret Hammond, followed by Marilyn Ginnell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Margaret Hammond, private citizen, speaking my piece of living in Glendale for 50 years. One of my best friends at this moment is waiting to go in for surgery. She never smoked a cigarette in her life. Last year, she lost part of her lungs, and this week, she's not sure how much more is going to be, she's going to lose. She has a 94-year-old mother that she cares for. And as you know, I lost my mother, my husband, and recently, my brother, all to smoking. Directly, on their death certificates, there was contribution factors was smoking. My husband was told, one week before he died, quit or you'll die. There you are. It is an addict, what is it? You know, I remember when we used to go dancing at the Palladium and being burned by people with cigarettes in their hand, my, being burned on my arm, my dress being burned, and the place being full of smoke. I'm sure there's a lot of us suffer from those days. I've had my property nearly burned up with smokers, and I feel very strongly and messed up with smoking. I do not allow smoking in my apartments. That is one of the rules that when I, they sign the lease in huge letters across the top, "No Smoking," and that's it. And my tenants are very happy. They really are, they're tickled to death to rent. I can rent immediately because there's no smoking in my apartments. And I'm, you know, the passing of this ordinance will only improve the quality of life in Glendale. And isn't that what we're, you know, we really want is to have our quality, you know, of life improved? You know, where is our haven at night to go home to from everyday pressures? We can't wait to get home. And then, and then, our haven is full of secondhand smoke. I myself am very sensitive to it. As I've gotten older, it's worse. My eyes run continually when I'm anywhere near a smoker, and my breathing becomes, I have problems, I've had to go and have, go to the doctor about, I just can't be around it. So that is affecting my quality of life and my enjoyment of life here in Glendale. And I don't think that's fair. I've put in my dues, living here and being a part of Glendale and paying my taxes and, you know, just supporting Glendale. So I feel that I deserve to have my quality of life protected, and this ordinance would help to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn Ginnell, followed by Susan Jakarle.
Good evening. I would like to make a comment tonight. First of all, I've been keeping track, and there has only been one person, and a health professional of all people, to say that you should vote down this ordinance. I say that you should vote it up. My husband, who is an oncologist, says yes, vote it up. And the people I talk to in daily living say, oh, how wonderful. Glendale is going to be a leader, just like we have been with other issues, and we are going to vote yes on this ordinance. It's crucial. I was at a meeting at the Mexican restaurant outside at the Americana about a week ago, and it was lovely, and it was warm, and it was beautiful, and then stench came to our table. And everyone was looking from their tables. Where is the stench coming from? It was coming from a balcony on one of the condos or apartments, I don't know which it was, that was above and slightly to my left as I was sitting at my table. And stench from a cigar was infiltrating into our meeting. This cannot be allowed to continue. This is disgusting, gross and disgusting. My son-in-law is very saddened by the fact that his mother died a grisly death of lung cancer and never got to meet her now two- and three-year-old grandsons because she always told Frank, "Don't worry, Frank. My smoking doesn't bother anyone." She said, "Mom, it bothers me. It bothers me that you are smoking." And then, on her deathbed, she said, "Frank, you were right. It bothered everyone." And he said, "Yes." And now, look what is happening to our family. So it is critical. And don't think that I was not a smoker, because when I was in nursing school in 1959 and then through to 1965, I smoked. I didn't smoke a lot, but I did smoke, and that was what many doctors and nurses under high stress did in those days. But now, most of them have smartened up, the way that you will help us to smarten up here in Glendale, and they are not smoking anymore. And my husband got me to quit before we married in 1965. Most of us who smoked in that time wish we hadn't, but we can't go backwards in time. But the lucky ones didn't smoke a lot and stopped. Please, follow your hearts, and your hearts and your lungs will take us to voting yes on this ordinance and getting smoking out of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Jakarle, please, followed by Noel Millian.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say really quickly that I'm a mom of two Glendale residents.
For the record, please.
Oh, Susan Jakarle, sorry. Mom of two, and I agree with everyone that's been speaking up here. Smoking is vile, it's evil. We live in an apartment, and our next-door neighbor, I don't know how he does it, but chain smokes in the shower, so you can imagine when he's like outside. So please, please, please pass this ban to, pass the ordinance to ban public smoking. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Amy Clem, followed by Ann Nord, please. I may have. Noel Millian. Oh, Noel Millian, sorry. Then Amy Clem. Why don't you, why don't you come on up and, and we'll, we'll let Amy Clem sit in the on-deck circle here.
Well, I still have my nerve to do. You'll have to bear with me, I wasn't quite prepared for this this evening. My name's Noel Millian. I'm a resident of the northwest part of Glendale. I've been a resident of Glendale for 30-plus years. It's a place that I've loved. I loved growing up here. I chose to buy a house here and raise my family here. But one of the things I don't like, how we're subjected to, is secondhand smoke. I can't go into a coffee shop without my, dragging my two children behind me. I can't go into a department store without making a beeline for the door. I have to say, on a personal level, excuse me, nervous, on a personal level, my son, six-years-old, suffers from asthma, and because of that, I can't eat in an outdoor restaurant, excuse me, I can't eat at a café outside for fear of somebody smoking next to us because he might have an asthma attack. Unfortunately, I know that people have the right to smoke, but I also have the right to be in a public setting without fear of my ha, my son having an asthma attack. I would really love to enjoy the outdoor settings more with my children and not have to pick them up and take off running because someone is having a cigarette outside. It would really make me happy to be, I'm, I'm very happy a part of, to be a part of this community, but it would make me really proud to be a part of this community, to know that Glendale would be taking a step forward and being a model city, just like Santa Monica has done, just like Burbank has done, and make a stand and acknowledge the fact that, we all know, secondhand smoke is a great health hazard to adults and to young, to young children. Anyway, thank you.
How bad was it now that you got through?
Oh, my God. I need to drink a bottle of water.
The council hasn't devoured anyone so far tonight, but the evening, but the evening is young, so, okay. Amy Clem, followed by Ann Nord.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, city council and staff. My name is Amy Clem, and I'm a Glendale resident. I'm not going to give you an earful about how dangerous secondhand smoke is, or quote a lot of statistics and data to support it. You've heard it all before, read it, studied it, and it's my belief that you all know it. What I'm here to say tonight is that I'm proud you've taken this step, historic step. We're all here tonight, both for and against, because you saw the need to change something in our city. Now, here we are hashing out what something will ultimately be. I would love to see the draft we have before us as it is and in its entirety become the ordinance you adopt. I encourage it and hope all of you see the overwhelming long-term benefits such an action will have on all of us. I'd like to remind you that we are asking each of you to do what you think is best for us, the citizens of Glendale. I think you know what best is, but I'm a little worried that big money and a few naysayers will sway you to compromise. You know it's illegal to sell alcohol, pornography, and cigarettes to minors. It's also illegal to give alcohol, pornography, and cigarettes to minors. If you show a minor an X-rated film, at minimum, you can face charges of corrupting a minor. But if you blow cigarette smoke into a minor's face, make them live with it in their home, in your car, or while eating at a restaurant, you get nothing, not even a ticket. That needs to change. Adults can act on their own behalf, but our children need us to protect them. Passing this ordinance will be a step in the right direction, and I strongly urge you to do, to think of all your children or yourself as a child when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Nord, followed by Valerie Gardner.
My name is Ann North. I'm as nervous as I was. I've been a resident of Glendale for eight years and have fallen in love with this community, with the people and everything that it stands for. I've also been a pediatric hematology oncology nurse for 18 years, and I've seen firsthand the effects of smoking and secondhand smoke has on children. I've also done adult oncology, so I've seen what it does to adults. And I'm also the mother of two, and I just came tonight because I wanted to show my support in banning smoking in Glendale. I would love to be able to walk with my children, sit at an outdoor restaurant, enjoy our beautiful weather, sit in an outdoor café, and not have to worry that I am surrounded or engulfed by cigarette smoking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Valerie Gardner.
Good evening. My name's Valerie Gardner. I am also a Glendale resident, and I'm here in support of this ordinance to ban smoking in public places here in Glendale. I also love living here, and one of the things that I don't like about Glendale is that people can currently smoke in public areas. And I have two children. I also can't take them to eat on a patio, in a patio setting, or, there have been many times when I've taken my daughter to ballet class, and the door has been open and there's a smoker right there on the sidewalk. I mean, you know, common sense would have done smokers a lot of good, but unfortunately, you know, my children's lungs need protecting, as well as mine. I have asthma, and cigarette smoke will trigger my asthma, and so I feel that it is your duty as our officials to protect us citizens from secondhand smoke, so I am here to plead that to you. So currently, my children's lungs are pink, and I'd like to keep them in that way, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was our last speaker. I'd like to go now to the council, and let's start on this end with Mr. Weaver.
Okay, well, I guess I'm the one that started this, so I'll start with my comments first. I'll tie a couple of these things in because of something I'll say in a minute. But here's the City Views that went out in the inside page, "Council to evaluate possible smoking restrictions." It's just one of many ways we notified the public that we were going to talk about this item tonight. So far, by my count, the vote was 25 to 1 for this projected ordinance. Secondly, I'd like to refresh people's mind that the Constitution and the first 10 amendments known as the Bill of Rights gave in there the right to bear arms. That's the only specific one called out in the Constitution. Want to, I got these things in order, so I want to make sure I got them right. There's some other things that were said, studies. Says middle age, this was a study that was done, ages, participants 35 to 55, done over 17 years. Middle-aged adults who smoke tend to perform poorly on tests of memory and reasoning compared to non-smokers. Smoking was associated with mental decline in middle age. That's one article I read. Beijing introduces anti-smoking rules for the Olympics. Smoke-free Olympics. Hotels and restaurants, for the first time, cannot have any smoking. Physical, fitness centers, offices, meeting rooms, toilets, and lifts in buildings must be completely smoke-free within a few days of this issuance. Chinese capital have hired 100,000 inspectors to enforce the ban. We'll never be able to do that here. But, boy, they're, they're positive thinking there. The Olympic venues are under stringent smoking bans, and China has about 350 million smokers. One-third of the world's smokers all live in China. About 1 million people die of smoking-related diseases each year in China. Now, I'd like to read a couple of prose that I got, because we get emails, believe me. You got a lot. I just picked a few. One person participated in the Great American Cleanup, and she walked from Wilson, on Wilson from Glendale Avenue to Harvey Drive, and they entered the Wilson Mini Park, and they talked about the abundance of cigarette butts in the park. The majority were found around the picnic tables, despite the fact there was no cigarette, despite the fact there was an ashtray next to each table. The other place where there was a tremendous number of cigarette butts was found in the play area itself, in the wood chips. Another writer, talking about Kenneth Village, "Smoking has become very prevalent. There's a new toy store, and the owner, when it is time to smoke, comes out on the sidewalk in front of stores and smokes. Small coffeehouse café recently sold, and smokers now gather at the outdoor tables. Is the same for the pastry shop on the other side of the street. And a few minutes ago, this woman left the yoga studio and spelled cigarette smoke coming from the auto repair shop. Says people are gathering in various spots along the small stretch to stand, talk, and smoke. That's turning people off in Kenneth Village. Up in the area where I live, in Lower Shoal Canyon Park, woman writes, "There are cigarette butts everywhere, even the kids' play areas. What mother likes to grab a cigarette butt out of her child's hand or mouth." Another one in Windsor Mini Park, where it was prohibited to smoke, we made a mistake and we started allowing smoking. She says about the young men that are going out in the street and smoking around the cars, and they're getting smoke all over. Those were some around town that support this ordinance. And then, there's a few that are against. One writes, "It's an attack on individual rights." I think I just said the Constitution doesn't protect individual rights on smoking. Another one, this is a real good one. "Well, once again, the city council's gone too far. I read the article on Saturday's paper and could not blame my eyes. What gives you the right to vote to skip initial public input into what you are proposing?" Well, it was in City Views and listed all over the place that we're doing this tonight. "I'm reading the promise months ago that the public would be involved and allow us to have input into this ridiculous ban." us to have input into this ridiculous ban that has gone way too far. One tonight? Why not let the people of Glendale vote on this matter? Are you scared of the outcome? Great. Now you want to take away the rights of individuals." There it is again, and just about everyone I got talked about their rights. It says like, "It sounds like we are becoming a communist country." Not that was a corker to end it with. Now, my next one. My father, I told this story before. In the 1930s, 20s and 30s, my father was a chain smoker. When I was a baby, he had a heart attack. The doctors told him if he did not stop immediately, he would be dead in six months. He lived 18 years. I got to see him grow up, and when I was 19, another heart attack took him. He was on Gliston, nitroglycerin pills all those 18 years. He had pain constantly. That was before such thing as bypass surgery, or heart, anything to do with the heart. And I told the story of going to Rams games, Raider games at the Coliseum, confined to my seat, and we always sat in the top row, and the strong drifts of cigarettes and marijuana drifting up right into my face, that of my wife and my kids, week after week. And we'd sit there trying to fan the smoke and the marijuana away from us. There were no regulations at that time. I received, and I couldn't find the email I got some time ago. Some person in Glendale was very upset that we were going to consider instituting a smoking ban here. Says it's just downright insulting. The people in Burbank are forced to come over to Glendale to smoke. I said, "Really?" So I don't know where they'll go, because LA's going to start instituting, every other city is. I thought that was pretty comical. And when you see a smoker, most smokers, what do they do? Take the whip, and they put the cigarette over here, not in front of them. They put it over here so the smoke will go that way. And where do they blow? Straight ahead so it goes that way. They really care about you. If they did, they would keep it here and they would swallow the smoke. They're not going to do that. Here and here. We've already heard about the secondhand smoke statistics. The evidence is overwhelming on this. Americana Recusa told me that he does not lease or sell condos or apartments there to any smoker, fully non-smoking. So if that is occurring there, we've got to pin down where it's coming from, because Recusa will take care of it. The only thing that I don't agree with him on, he agreed with the smoking ordinance except one of the two things, is outdoor patios of restaurants which are controlled by the tenant that choose to permit smoking, subject to state regulations and any other local limitation city council might develop. So as far as I'm concerned, there'll be no smoking outside anywhere when we get done. There was only two things that I questioned in the ordinance, and I think I have my questions answered by Mr. Engel. Calabasas passed an ordinance similar, restrictive, and in apartments, they said 80%, not 85 that we're talking about. That's Mr. Engel, and I think he said the county health department statistics or whatever said about 85%. Is that right, Mr. Engel? Just yes or no? Is that the county health?
Yeah, the 15% Councilman Weaver is the incidence of smoking among adults, because kids aren't supposed to be smoking, the incidence among adults in Los Angeles County.
So that's where the 85% came from, so I can buy that. The second thing Calabasas said, four years to implement in apartments. And we said, as initially, being very draconian, two years to implement. Now, I don't know the implications, because I asked, I knew from past studies that the turnover in single-family residents on the average is five, five, six years. I asked, Mr. Engel, if there were any statistics on the turnover in apartments. Some people live in apartments 20, 30 years. Others live six months. But if you want to look at overall average, falls in the same area, five to six years. So if you wanted to give on anything, because I support this entire ordinance, phase at the end over, instead of two, could be four. I prefer two, but I don't know the impact that makes on landlords and everything trying to do what this ordinance instructs. My preference would be the two years. The proposed ordinance does clearly state that areas can be designated for smoking by the city manager. Areas like the courtyard of the Alex Theater, you could not smoke there under this ordinance. But an area could be designated outside the courtyard, maybe in the back, alongside the alley, there'd be a zone where it could be stated, smoking permitted, areas like that. And you could do it in your single-family residence. But we've talked about, if we're going to put in apartments, you're going to have to separate smoking and the non-smoking zones. And from what I heard tonight, when they talk about horizontal, I mean, the vertical placement, now I'm convinced you're going to have to put the smokers on the top floor. Because you put them on the ground, smoke is just coming up with the non-smoker, and the floor is above. So that I would want to see, that smoking floor has to be above or in a separate building, far away. And the last thing, the public, if they want to have something to say about it, motions tonight are to give direction to staff. That means that staff will take what we say, will come back with a draft ordinance, another public venue for all those that insist on smoking and killing themselves can come in and speak if they wish. Once that is hearing, they'll come back two weeks later, I think it is, for approval of the ordinance, and they will have a chance to speak again. So the public is not being denied the right to speak on this ordinance. I think it's long overdue. I have a grandchild, and I want her to grow up in a smoke-free environment, so I'd fully support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Let me go to Laura Perazzini, if you have any comments.
Yes. I wish not only Glendale, but every small and large city in the United States adopt this ordinance. I think it's proven fact that the smoking is a health hazard, so we need to do everything, everything we could do to stop smoking in public areas, in apartment buildings, in every place that mostly there are gatherings of people. So I support this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I agree with the majority of the provisions in the ordinance, and like Ms. Perazzini, I agree, as a nation, we've got to do something to try to, at the bare minimum, even if you don't think of the humanity of it, just to try to cut down on the billions of dollars that are spent because of the illnesses associated with smoking. So I'd like to enact most of the provisions, however, there are some that I think are going to be too difficult to implement, and that includes the 85% rule and the stacking and clustering in one area of a apartment building. There's enough pressure on renters at this point in terms of rents and so forth, so that's going to be difficult for me to go there at this point. However, smoking prohibited in common areas of apartment buildings, I think that's something that's easily to do and enforce. And then in terms of parks and other recreation facilities, I think we can ban smoking, and we could always come up with a small smoking area somewhere within a park so people can physically go there and smoke a cigarette and then get back to the rest of their activities. And as Burb, well, Burbank's already adopted, but as Pasadena adopts their ordinance, we can begin to monitor what they're doing, how they're enforcing it, and maybe move to a little stronger position.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I'm strongly against smoking. I've experienced everything that speakers have. I have a child who has asthma, who gets triggered when he has cigarette smoke in the vicinity. I think we have to take reasonable steps, though, towards implementing these provisions. I'm afraid that if we do the entire package as presented, it's going to be something that's just going to be uncontrollable and unenforceable by our police department. But, I mean, I'm ready to go for many, many of these provisions. I think that the smoking on all public property should be prohibited. I like the idea of the city manager or the council designating smoking areas, and I like the kiosk, maybe the old-style gazebo, prefab gazebo, set it up in a corner away from everything else, and that's the only place that smoking would be permitted. I'm in favor of prohibiting smoking in the common areas of the apartment buildings. I think once we start getting into the smoking within the actual units, that's very difficult. I think that's just a tough one to, tough one to enforce. You are going to have neighbors, you know, calling, I mean, imagine the call, you know, "I think my neighbor's smoking." And would we expect a police officer to come and knock on their door? If we wouldn't, you know, and they have a lot of other things going on in this city, and if they aren't going to respond to that call and knock on that person's door, then the ordinance prohibiting smoking in the apartment unit has no teeth. Clearly, the landlords are in, I think, a much better position to declare, voluntarily declare, areas of their building or their entire building as no smoking. And if there's a violation, there's an eviction. They're clearly entitled to do an eviction. The ordinance is set up, I think, with enough leeway that there must be a warning issued first, so the crime, the infraction is continuing, the crime is the failure to stop smoking after receiving a warning. You know, we get to the outdoor restaurants and the patios. I need to, I need to think about that. I think maybe at least we should have certain areas designated for smoking only in the outside, that there be non-smoking portions of the, of the, of the patios. We're dealing with, we're dealing with people who are sick. We're dealing with people who are addicted. And I don't say that lightly, and I don't think we should underestimate what an addiction is. Addiction is a psychological and a physiological need for a drug, and this is what they have. And all the rules in the world about not smoking here and not smoking there are going to have little effect on people who have the psychological craving for the cigarette. That being said, these rules are to protect the non-smokers. However, I think we, we have to be realistic in how far we can change the behavior of those people that do smoke. I'm ready to push this further at a later point, but I think this is, the areas that I've talked about, and I think Mr. Quintero was pretty close to a lot of them, is a good series of strong steps, which will ultimately, hopefully, will result in revisiting it where we will be able to change behavior such that no one is smoking at all on the streets, on the sidewalks. Also, Ms. Clem talked about smoking in a car. It is, it is currently against the law to smoke in a car with a child under 18. That currently is, is a law. So that's where I'm at. I know that there's a vast, vast support in the council chambers this evening, supporting this ordinance. I can assure you, folks, there is a sleeping giant, a smoking giant out there that hasn't been prodded, and, and when cornered, there's just going to be mayhem, I think. There's going to be huge, huge opposition to this. They don't know it yet, but I think when the word gets out, we'll start to see some more action. That's why I think we need to do an ordinance that's workable, something that, something that protects our air, but gives some outlet for the smokers to do what they have to do, but limit the infiltration of that smoke to all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Yusefian.
When he said "smoking giant," that jolly green giants thing came out to me, except it's in gray. Says, "Oh, oh, oh, I'm smoking." Let me tell you a couple of things. How many of you smoked today? Raise your hand. Guess what? Every one of us smoked today three cigarettes. We smoked equivalent to three cigarettes. Every single person who lives in LA County smokes, whether you like it or not. We don't call it cigarettes, we call it smog. That's the problem with a lot of our emphysemas. That's the problem with what you're facing. I have smoked one cigarette when I was 18, and I didn't even finish it. You know what? I have lung issues. Not because I'm around anybody who smokes. My parents don't smoke. My friends don't smoke. Live in a house, lived in a condo, lived in an apartment, never came around to smoke. Not the issue of the secondhand smoke. It's I live in LA. So you don't want to have any problems with your lungs? Leave LA. I'll be very honest with you. I drove to Northern California. You know what? Beautiful, clean air. My lungs were shocked how clean it was. So this ordinance is not going to solve all your perils. This ordinance is not going to save one life. This ordinance is not going to keep anybody's heart attacks down. Any children are going to be raised, and they're going to be pure, and there's not going to be any, it's not going to do any of that stuff. So should we adopt an ordinance? I think we should. We've got to start somewhere. You start somewhere. Let me tell you, for all you people who sit there on the sidewalk cafes and eat, and you have a problem with the smoker, guess what your smoke problem, your problem is? Is all those cars driving by. They're putting out more PMs than the guy who's smoking behind you. You just don't know it. The reason we have more asthma problems in the last few years, as the one de facto person said, is because according to Southern California Association of Government, the air quality in the Southern California basin has gone down the tube in the last four years. We were making good progress, but guess what? Detroit is making all those big cars, and they're puffing up more smog into the air. More population, more cars, that's your number one problem. All those diesel trucks, that's your other problem. All those planes that we all fly all over, that attributes us also. So it's not just one thing. Now, on the issue of smoking, I always thought that we should just ban, it's very simple to me, I don't need a rocket science, I don't need anybody in here to tell me smoking is good or bad, I already know that. I did my research a long time ago, 30 years ago. I was involved in a TV show called Feminine Mistake, program called Medics with Mario Machado. I was one of those people who, we did- I was one of those people who, we did the program called Feminine Mistake, and it won an Emmy. It has to do with females smoking. And believe it or not, female body is more susceptible to damage than male is. We're not all the same. And, to an extent, you know what? There are some people who smoke all their lives, not one problem. In this study, this woman started smoking when she was 42 years old. By the time she was 43, she died of lung cancer. One year! That's all it took! So, we're not all the same. I think we started this council, at least three of us in here were in the council, when we went out and started moving down the path of banning smoking in the children's play area. I think we need to go further now. I am willing, and I will vote, for a ban in all public facilities. That's all the libraries, all the parks, not just little corner of the park, the whole park. All of those public facilities that we have, I think we can easily... That includes this building, outside of this building, and including the 2,000 workers in this city, and there are some that smoke. They're not going to be happy, including people in our own offices that walk outside. They will not be able to do that anymore. But I think we should do that. That's a good start. I have an issue with apartments, because I think that's a major nightmare in making. So you go there, and you say, "Okay, 15% of this building is smoke." You know, you could smoke there. You have a building here. You have a person on this apartment. He's allowed to smoke. You have a building right next to it. It happens that, in that building, there are non-smokers all here, and the smokers over here. What happens when this person smokes and opens the window, and the non-smoker spills? Did that person violate the law? Is there a problem? Did it actually create a problem? How do you do this? I don't think there's enough evidence out there of how different cities are dealing with this, and has been adopted long enough for us to know it has been adopted and debugged. So, while I'm not saying no to it, I'm saying I will reserve my judgment on that particular thing. I'm not as confident for that purpose. Kiosks? Gee, maybe we should buy all those old telephone booths and put them in one corner. You kind of go inside, and we'll put a little fan on top with a filter in it, so you smoke in there, and the air cleans out.
So where do you go?
Because, you know, in reality, it's in a kiosk, you're outside, you're still polluting the air, so... You know, if you go to a park, you're going to be there for maybe two hours, three hours. If you can't stop smoking for three hours, you've got major problems. You have really major problems. So I'm not into major kiosks, maybe in some of the areas where the people work, but I don't see it in the parks. That's what I feel comfortable in. I think the rest of this stuff, I would like to have the staff go back and work on some of the languages, try to figure out how these things are going to work, how we're going to implement it, how much is it going to take to enforce it. Let's not forget, we're not China, okay? We're not a communistic country, and we can't afford... How many people? 100,000?
A million a year.
No, no, no. How many thousand they hired?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. We can't afford that, guys. We can barely afford the 2,000 people that are working for us. We can't even afford that. So, can't afford 100,000 people to watch 200,000. So, I need to know what the cost ramifications of this is. Who's going to enforce it? Is it going to be the police? Is it going to be the neighborhood services? How do you do this? So there's more that I need to have. But as I said, I'm very comfortable with doing this with parks, and also all the city facilities. And one question I will ask our city attorney, would the Americana fall under the park category?
The open space would. There's also a companion part of this report to address the Americana separately if you do not move forward with the ordinance.
Okay. I'll tell you why I think Americana is different. When you have half a million people go to one location that is so confined every weekend, I would say that is considered to be an area that I would like to enforce this law. Because there's a lot of people out there. I also was on Fridas, and I was sitting there, and somebody was just walking by and smoking. So, you know, it doesn't destroy my experience, but nevertheless, I think the speaker had a case on that. I also don't know, did we pass anything with the DDA that said Mr. Caruso could not sell any apartments to people who are smokers?
No, it was his decision.
It was his decision?
It was his decision. He doesn't want smoking.
It's not in the DDA?
Let's get an answer. Mr. Land...
It is not included in the DDA. When I spoke to Caruso affiliate, they said it was their intention to have a smoke-free property. They were not sure how they would enforce it once the unit was sold, but for the residential units, they were going to be smoke-free, and within their common areas, smoke-free.
So he can control the rental part, because...
Control the rental part.
But I don't think he can control the condos.
He certainly can if it's part of the CCNRs.
Part of the CCNRs.
And he owns the...
Okay. And is it included in the CCNR?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
Could you please find out?
Find out.
Okay.
He said it wouldn't be.
Mr. Yusefian has the floor.
I'm done.
Oh, he had the floor, and he gave it back. Mr. Mincy?
You're talking about television shows. There's a current one on cable called Mad Men that takes place in the late '60s, early '70s, where everyone is smoking. And I remember that, but you forget about it till you see it. And I talked to the actors about it, on how they're reacting, because some of them are non-smokers. They're almost becoming smokers because they're in this all of the time. But I remember flying back and forth to New York during that time, and you young people wouldn't believe it, but they actually gave you, they fed you on the airplane. Remember that? But they also gave you free cigarettes. Everyone got a free pack of cigarettes on your tray. That was just part of the deal in those days. We have come a long way, but we also have a lot of immigrant people, particularly from Europe and from Asia, who all seem to smoke. Everybody you talk to, they all seem to smoke. So it takes a while to get the healthy, you know, to get people, get the message here. I'm astounded that there were only one negative vote that came up here tonight. But I certainly support the ordinance. I do think it's going to be a problem in the apartments. It certainly will be up to the apartment manager. Now, I live in an apartment. I'm on the second floor, and the lady below me does not want her husband smoking in the house, so he stands in the doorway with his cigarette out door, and that comes right into my room. And that's very common. I've seen others like that, too. You see them in the doorway, smoking. And so it's going to take some education to... It's not going to be enforced by the police. It's going to be enforced by the apartment managers, I would say, in the whole. I do believe in personal freedom, but when it affects other people, then that's a different thing. And particularly when it involves such as asthma and other items such as that. But I do support it by, it's going to be a tough haul to just boom, have everything approved immediately without several years, perhaps, of getting it put in force.
I'm kind of keeping score here, by the way. I hope I know staff is as well, but I'm just trying to keep score, Mr. Mincy. So, just so I understand, you are all right with the ordinance as-is?
Yeah.
Or the proposal as-is, but perhaps some questions about the phase in time?
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Weaver, you told me you have something you want to add.
Yeah, just want to comment about the enforcement. Littering is against the law. Please try to enforce. You have to be caught in the act. We have Glendale Cleanup Day to clean up the litter that people leave. And cigarette butts, heck. L.A. River was my project for some 10 years, and I walked every foot of the L.A. River from the mouth to up in, above Sepulveda Dam to the west end of San Fernando Valley. Guess what was the most prevalent thing in that river? Cigarette butts. We are now required to pick up all those cigarette butts. That's a law that the city must deal with. Speeding is illegal. Do we get every speeder? Do you watch them go by, 80, 90? Don't catch them all. Carpool lane violations, that's illegal. Do we catch them all? No. Making right-hand turns on a red light without even hesitating. Against the law? Yes. Do we catch them all? No. Smoking in an apartment? Are we going to catch them all? No. There is no law on this earth that is going to be totally enforceable. Whether you have a right to kill, do you have a right to bear arms? Come on, get realistic. Every law made is made for a reason, but every lawbreaker is caught, but just not enough police to go around. So it's a lame excuse to me. It's interesting, if you made the count here, I don't know what the mayor's going to do yet, but right now, it would be at least 3-3, with the two housing authority people apparently agreeing to the ordinance as it is. Unfortunately, when it comes time to vote, the agency is going to vote, and the council's going to vote. From what I'm hearing, I greatly sympathize for everybody that lives in an apartment, because you're not going to get what you need. Only the other groups are. And that's it.
May I make one other?
Yes, Mr. Mincy.
When you put one area non-smoking, one area smoking, and it's still a small area, everybody's in the smoke. I know when airliners in first class, there were four rows, and two rows were non-smoking, two rows were smoking. It didn't make any difference at all. And then the railroads had a car, they'd have a smoking car, and then all the... You'd look, you couldn't even see in there, the smoke was so thick, but there were little kids in there, too, having to be with their parents. Now, the trains are completely smoke-free, but when you consider where non-smoking's going to be versus smoking, you have to consider that, too, as far as the space.
The ordinance.
Okay, well, Mr. Weaver, I think your math is probably right.
Happy for that.
In that you've got a split deal here, probably, between the council and the agency. At any rate, I don't support the... I'll just cut to the chase. I don't support the ordinance as-is. I do support some movement forward, although an interesting concept came up here tonight of some sort of a kiosk or a nicotine bubble, and just the image of a big plastic ball with smokers in it, rolling themselves around in public areas and parks, chasing their kids with a frisbee. I don't know, it's just a very strange... Look, there's Grandma in the bubble over there, in the nicotine bubble. Wave at Grandma. Oh, she can't see you through the smoke. Never mind.
I can't see you.
All right. I do support an extension of our ban, the city's ban, on city-owned facilities, parks, public spaces, and that would include the areas that we can affect with regard to Americana. I... Where am I? I'm sorry, folks. My notes here. I don't, where I don't support this is the issue of apartments and condos. I do support it for common areas in apartments and condos, common areas, walkways, and balconies, the things that are typically considered common area in a condo, I would also apply to an apartment. Where I don't support the issue at this time, and like some of my colleagues, I would consider it in the future, or as we go along, if there's more info that might change my mind, the idea of the 85% rule and the idea of how you cluster units together, I think that is an extremely difficult thing to do, and I think that it is going to put a tremendous amount of hardship out there. Let me see. Where I part from, I part with some of my colleagues, or perhaps side with others, is something that I've been wrestling with all day in my mind, and that is the issue of restaurants, outdoor restaurants and sidewalks. Where I'm not exactly clear how we're going to be able to enforce a ban on somebody walking down the sidewalk with a cigarette, or somebody who stops and just suddenly lights up a cigarette, I have really come down in my mind at this point on a good, strong look at restricting smoking in outdoor public eating areas in the city of Glendale. I did not feel that way initially, and let me tell you what the concerns are in my mind about that. When the city of Los Angeles first created its first smoking ban, that was, you have to think back a ways, that was before the statewide ban, and the city council voted that in, and what happened was total non-acceptance of that smoking prohibition. Instead, what happened was exactly what was predicted. Smokers voted with their feet, and they left the city, and they went to eat lunch, breakfast, and dinner across the border in Beverly Hills and other cities that didn't have the smoking ban, which was just about everywhere at the time. There was not acceptance of that, by and large. When it changed, and everybody got on the same page, was when we had a statewide ban. And suddenly, we were all in the same boat together. And you couldn't just hop over the border into Glendale from Los Angeles and smoke. My concern initially was that if we do this here, we're going to seriously damage our small businesses in a time when the economy is pretty bad, when people are pretty upset. And on top of that, we don't have a, we don't have, we're not surrounded by cities that have done the same. However, I can't help but think that if I walked into, walked up to a restaurant, it was seated in an outdoor smoking area, and maybe I might pick on, I know we have a couple of police officers here, so let me pick on the officer in the back of the room there, if I could. You think me?
He agrees. He agrees.
If I'm a patron in a restaurant, and I go out to the sidewalk to eat, and I'm sitting there, it's a crowded outdoor eating area, and I reach down into my bag, and I pull out a slide trombone, and I start blaring away on the slide trombone, and the manager asks me to stop, and I say no, and they pick up the phone, and they call the police, and you arrive, and there I am with it, what are you going to say to me? And then what? Actually, would you come up to the microphone? You come on down!
Wake him up.
You've won a brand-new car!
Now, this is the first police officer that has been caught like this.
He had no idea this was part of the job.
Old Ford's is sitting over there watching him.
So, I'm now sitting outside Gourmet Gogo in Montrose, and I take out a slide trombone while people are eating their breakfast, and I'm just blaring away on it. And the manager asks me to stop, and I say no, and I continue to do that. They call you, you're the responding officer. What do you tell me?
I say to quit playing the trombone.
And if I say no, or I don't comply?
Then it's a misdemeanor.
Okay. Thank you, and happily, that's all I wanted to get from you. The point is, the point is...
The answer is, you should have given him a dollar for playing it.
My point in all of this is that I'm sitting out there doing that. I'm not injuring the health of the people around me, I'm annoying them, and yet, there's an ordinance to cover it. But if I'm smoking out there, and I'm injuring other people's health, there is nothing to help them. And that's, I think, the deciding factor for me here. So I can't go with some of my colleagues on that one. I want to explore that further, and I think, and I want to ask you also to think about the fact... the fact that we're not voting on an ordinance tonight, so what we do here tonight might come in and it might not come in, depending on how the votes ultimately end up. That one, I'm afraid I'm going to flip-flop in my own head on that one, and I'll take the heat from the, those who prefer to smoke in restaurants, I think, and just go that way. What did I leave out? I've been so busy keeping score of what my colleagues are doing, I lost track here. Yes, sir.
I know, I'm kinda going back on what I said, but what if we do the apartments except we do, we start with like twenty-five percent, which we start the ball rolling. We did things incrementally, which is, we say twenty-five percent has to be absolutely no smoking. That will give a nice seventy-five percent. It would allow the apartment owners to kind of try to figure out how to do this. Project will be all debugged and so on and so forth, and then come back and ratchet that up to fifty percent, and then later on come up. So do it slowly, instead of we do nothing and then go back and say, okay, now eighty-five percent is not...
Are you talking about for specifically apartments?
Yes. So at least we have something in the books, and it allows the industry to start thinking in those directions. What Mr. Mincy said, it reminded me of something. In the restaurants, originally, there was a smoking section and a nonsmoking section. And I remember, there was a little glass wall that didn't go all the way to the top, and you were on this side, which was nonsmoking, and this side that was smoking. But slowly, some of those things ended up changing, and people started getting used to the concept of, maybe this is not working, we need to go to a total ban on the inside. Hence, now we're on the outside, allowing people to smoke outside, so they're not inside. Now we're tightening that ratchet, saying, you can't even smoke outside. So what I was trying to get to is, in the apartments, we do the same thing, slowly. Give them a chance, twenty-five percent, that is very easy to implement, because I don't think there's a single apartment building that's a hundred percent smokers. So then we will hear from the apartment owners, Sam will hear it, and we will, basically, it'll be like a test case, we'll know what is working. And then, if things are working fine, then you ratchet it up slowly. You think, is that a support for that idea?
I'm not sure I understand you completely, Mr. Yusefian, to be very honest with you. You're talking about beginning with a twenty-five percent nonsmokers, or...
Right. Right now, we think eighty-five percent has to be nonsmokers.
Yeah.
I'm saying, make the law twenty-five percent nonsmokers. I know it's a low number. It's a low number. But then, I mean, we do this over a period of time.
Well, let me just end my comments by saying that the things I'm going to support at this time are no smoking in common areas of buildings, hallways, balconies, anything that would be typically considered common area. Sidewalk dining or exterior patio dining, parks and city facilities. I can't go along with the manipulation of the units inside a condo.
So leave that alone.
That's what I'm suggesting right now. Now, maybe as we move along and we hear another round of public input when this come back, maybe, maybe I will feel differently, but at this time, I do have a problem there.
How would you deal with the example you brought, as somebody's sitting there eating, let's say you're sitting there eating, and somebody walked by and lit a cigarette and started smoking as it walked by? That's okay?
Well, I think what we have with this is within so many feet, don't we?
Currently, as drafted, correct, but depends on what the council wants. If the council's really looking at...
Where I'm agreeing with the ordinance as is are the areas I'm mentioning. And one of them is the apartment house and the condominium. I don't, I am not ready to move to that point of saying, of talking about manipulating percentages within residency.
Okay.
I'm just not there, personally.
That's fine. I was just...
I can go with parks and public facilities and city-owned facilities, restaurants, sidewalk and patio dining, common areas within buildings, halls, balconies and so on. But I, I'm not ready to go there yet, that last point. Commercial buildings are already nonsmoking, is that correct, by state ordinance?
By state law with employers.
Okay.
So how would you, this ordinance, how does it deal with that scenario, somebody lighting up and walking by?
Correct, if I'm wrong.
Like what we talked about.
Our office hasn't had a chance to fully vet the ordinance, but I believe it's twenty feet, within twenty feet of the, either the gathering place, eating place, was that what?
Twenty feet. There's a twenty-foot distance regulation between any place where smoking would be permitted, as opposed to where it would be prohibited. There's a twenty-foot distance.
But if somebody's just walking with a cigarette in their hands?
By the ordinance that's in front of you, it's prohibited because it's on all public places. But that's not, I think all of you are discussing something different than that.
I think it's important to point out, the ordinance as drafted prohibits smoking in the public right-of-way unless you're on a street in an automobile, for example.
The sidewalks, for example.
Sidewalks, for example, would be prohibited. What I hear, what I hear the bulk of the council saying is prohibit it in eating establishments, but not go so far as to prohibit it in the public right-of-way unless that's within a certain distance of an eating establishment, outdoor dining establishment.
Okay.
That is what I'm saying.
Okay, got it.
And I might just clarify, I would take the public facilities, parks and grounds, for example, at the libraries, to include the grounds around the libraries, not necessarily the sidewalks, but the grounds around the libraries, like the tree well at the main library, for example.
I mean, we have a deed of trust.
It would be everything but the public right-of-way. Sidewalk wouldn't count, but all the grounds would.
All right. All right. Do I have other input from my colleagues? Mr. Quintero, Mr. Njari, Mr. Mincy?
No.
Ms. Brazian? Mr. Weaver?
Is that all?
Okay. Can I entertain a motion?
I would like to move for counsel as stated by Mr. Drayman.
Second.
Does the city attorney understand?
I think we've got good direction. I've been taking notes, I'm sure Mr. Starbird has, Mr. Engel has as well.
To clarify then, apartments are not out, they simply require more investigative...
What I'm hearing right now is no to the interior of apartments, except for those areas that are common areas, like hallways and balconies.
Ms. Mayor, I tried to do a little cheat sheet, you want me to try and hit the high points?
Good luck, Mr. Starbird, but yes.
Let me do the easiest one first. Public facilities, parks, grounds, et cetera, that was all yes. Public dining areas and within some reasonable distance of a public dining area, that had support. Multifamily was support for just the common areas, hallways. I heard balconies at one point.
I did.
Absolutely.
That would be included, okay.
Well, a question for the city attorney, if I may. In most condominiums, a balcony is considered common area, or in many condominiums.
No, it's actually, actually...
Well, in my building, let me tell you, it is. So I live in one of those old-fashioned, old, 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 trust me, old buildings.
Yeah, you don't usually see that. Normally, it's part of the individual unit, which is considered private.
Matter of fact, in my building, the maintenance and repair of the balconies are also the province of the...
So we might want to clarify that, and we can always include the ordinance and clarify when it comes back, but I think the balconies may be a question.
Okay.
Then, of course, there was a question of the manipulation and configuration of units, no interest going there, and the extension to the public rights-of-way, which was everything unless you're in a car, and no interest in going there.
So sidewalks?
Well, the ordinance as drafted prohibits smoking in the public rights-of-way, which would be in sidewalks and streets unless you're in an automobile, or a designated smoking area, correct, Sam?
Mr. Starbird, may the council, and one other thing, unless you are the only person out there, and there is nobody else around, since a nonsmoker would come up, you would have to stop as the ordinance is presented.
I'm confused. Nonsmoking on the streets?
It prohibited, it prohibited smoking in the public rights-of-way.
I think what Mr. Weaver's asking, what is the consensus you're hearing? The consensus is, you'd be able to smoke on the sidewalk within twenty feet of a dining area, not in a exterior dining area.
Prohibition would be not within some distance, twenty feet of a public dining area.
Mr. City Attorney?
It does raise the question, though, this difference between apartments and condominiums. I don't know, do we have consensus on the balconies of condominium units?
I wasn't into the condominiums, I understood that this was apartments, condominiums.
And that's why I'm asking the question, because what I heard was that the whole issue of common areas, including balconies of apartments, but if the consensus is...
I hadn't drawn a distinction between balconies and apartments, but maybe you want to make one. Certainly, apartment owners have an ability through their, condo owners through their association have the ability to impose their own regulations.
My concern is that if we start manipulating the smoking within people's residences, we're going to drive them out onto the balcony, which I think is going to create even more trouble for nonsmokers who live in those buildings. I would, as I said, I am not ready to, I'm ready to support the other things, I am not ready to support the interior of condominiums, and the reason I mentioned balconies was just in my own head, in my particular building, the balconies are the province of the HOA, including the maintenance of it.
You have exclusive use?
Yeah.
Based upon, based upon the deed or the CCNRs?
Yeah. It's just a very, very old set of regulations for an old, old...
Older building.
When I say old, I mean...
So I think the story remains, the question is how you want us to craft it for balconies.
Well, let's just quickly find out what kind of, what there is consensus for and what there is not.
And maybe if you go through, Ms. Mayor, do we apply the same restrictions to apartments and balconies? I mean, apartments and condos.
Current, currently, as the ordinance is drafted, it does not regulate smoking in condominiums.
Oh, it does not.
As drafted now.
Speaking specifically of apartment houses, may we find out where you are with balconies, just so we can lay this to rest?
I think as far as condos is concerned, you've got to leave them alone. As far as apartments, balconies should be included.
Mr. Yusefian?
No.
Mr. Njari?
No smoking on the balconies.
Mr. Quintero?
No smoking on the...
Obviously, I don't want to smoke.
Ms. Brazian? Okay. I think you have consensus on the balcony issue.
May I just throw one more thing into it? Bus stops? It should include no smoking in bus stops.
The ordinance as currently drafted would prohibit smoking at places like bus stops, queue lines, for example, even if they extend it right away, so an ATM machine that may be right on the sidewalk, there wouldn't be smoking in an ATM machine, or a bus stop, or lines like at the marketplace where you line up on the sidewalk to get, buy tickets to the theater.
I'm not into the queue lines. That's very difficult. Bus stops, everybody understands where it is. It's marked, there is a bench, there's a sign. All we have to do is put a little sign that says no smoking. It's very difficult to put a, you know, sign next to ATM machine and you're trying to get in.
All right. Queue lines, Mr. Mincy? It's okay, whatever you want to do.
It's not as important to me.
Okay.
Bus stops? Bus stops is real important.
Bus stops, yes.
No queue line smoking.
What about bus stops?
No bus stops smoking.
Okay.
Bus stops and queue lines, both.
I know where you are, Mr. Weaver, you've made it clear, Ms. Brazian.
Bus stops, but for two lines, I don't...
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No bus stops, but for two lines, I don't care.
Queue lines, you mean, you don't care?
Yeah, I don't care.
You don't care, okay. And I'm just fine with both, so...
It looks like it's in.
What was Mr. Yusefian's position on this?
Bus stops, bus stops only, okay.
So you've got, you've got three for, I mean, the city council acts on this, you've got three for bus stops and queue lines. At least three for bus stops and queue lines.
Clarify, counsel, I'm walking down the street on a sidewalk, I can smoke the way it's coming.
Not marijuana, no.
No.
Okay.
Let me finish my statement. So theoretically, I'm walking down Brand, go past Damon's, and I'm smoking, and I'm gonna go past Porto's Bakery. Now, within twenty feet, so when I get within twenty feet of all those outdoor tables, I will put out my cigarette, dispose it in a correct location, walk past Damon's, go twenty feet, I mean, past Porto's, and then light up again if I wish. Is that the way we're gonna talk about it?
So far, effectively speaking.
Oh, boy, that'll be a humdinger.
Or you can get in the sidecar of your friend's motorcycle.
That's true, too.
On our checklist, how are we coming? Are we there?
I think we're there. I'm not sure of other categories we haven't covered, we've held the major ones, and some of the minor ones.
Are you for queue lines?
I'm for both, yes.
Now, we had support, we had enough support for both queue lines and bus stops.
All right. Okay. We have a motion and a second for the council motion. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council members, Njari?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Since this is to give direction, and it leaves out apartments and sidewalks, I vote no.
Yusefian?
I'm not gonna mince words over queue lines, fine. I think we're gonna have a problem.
I'll take that as a yes?
Yes, you got it.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
Okay, now for the agency.
Same motion.
pertaining to the Americana at Brand.
Wait, this is different.
This is different.
The motion at 1B would authorize the city manager to prepare, actually staff to prepare an amendment to the current declaration of our reciprocal covenants, agreements and conditions, for the project to essentially allow the declaration of no smoking in the greens, the common area.
About just no smoking except in designated areas? And I think there's two areas that he's designated, currently.
If that's what you want.
What does the agency feel about that?
Well, is that, is that something that the agency should do?
It's our, it's our agency-owned open space, essentially, the greens, that part that we control.
It's distinguished from...
That's right.
...city property or areas that you otherwise regulate. So just to make sure that the circle is closed, we added this item for the redevelopments, to make sure somebody doesn't, wouldn't say, well, wait a minute, this isn't technically a city park facility or grounds, it's owned by the development.
See the interior, where the grass is and the water feature, just there.
Not the outdoor dining.
No, not the outdoor dining. Separately, if they vote on this, they can give direction to implement no smoking now.
Let me ask, just, let's stop for a moment. I have the city attorney talking, the city manager talking, my colleagues talking all at once, and I'm not able to follow. Let's start with the city attorney, city manager, and then the council.
Mr. Starbird is correct, the ordinance that we will bring back, if adopted, will cover this. However, if you want to deal with this now separately, we can deal with that administratively through this motion.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
I agree with the city attorney that I'm correct.
Mr. Landesvand, do you agree with the city manager?
I absolutely agree with both of them. But the designated spots that we referenced in the staff report are on private property that's controlled by Caruso. They're designated because they want people to go there to extinguish their cigarette or finish before they come into, into the greens. This motion would regulate, or would allow us to revise the rules and regulations that regulate the agency-owned property, and that's where Mr. Starbird and Mr. Howard are correct. So until such time as you adopt an ordinance that would ban that, that's where they would have those places for people to smoke and then extinguish their cigarette before coming in.
So, just for clarity here, I'm a smoker, I arrive at Americana at Brand, we don't yet have an ordinance, but when we do, assuming that it goes forward the way the consensus was, just for theory, where can I smoke?
You would probably be able to smoke on the corner of Orange and Caruso Avenue, where there's one of those designated spots. There's outdoor dining up at Frida's, where there's another designated spot, and I believe there's outdoor dining at Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, where the third one is. So those would be prohibited.
So the outside dining, when you say outdoor dining?
Outdoor dining.
Are you talking about the dining that's out on the Brand side, or on the interior of the...
On the interior.
So if you were at Granville, which also has exterior dining?
Right. There...
What would happen to you there?
You wouldn't be able to smoke there, but that's not...
Because it's not a designated area.
Correct.
Well, I guess that begs another question, though.
Sorry.
The greens, the common-owned, the common open space, you smoke there now?
There are no smoking signs, there are... There are no smoking signs, there are certain areas, as we outlined in our report, twenty feet from the playground, and then there's some other...
That's by the, the tot lot, that's the tot lot limitation under state law.
But our rules do not prohibit that, as currently drafted.
And that's what this motion would allow you to do, is to change those rules, the city manager could administratively change those rules to prohibit smoking throughout the greens or in designated areas, there are designated areas that Caruso's already designated that are not, are not under our control.
Mr. City Manager?
I was just going to point out that we, we were talking about the Americana, but as I recall in the ordinance, Sam, uh, it, smoking areas can be designated within malls, shopping malls, so whether it's the Americana or the Galleria, if the owners desire, there could be areas, smoking areas designated within, under the ordinance, uh, commercial establishments designated as malls.
So that we'd be back to our nicotine bubble somewhere?
It could be back to our nicotine bubbles.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Weaver?
Well, for the chair, I mean, for the agency, I was gonna, as an interim, move 1B.
Okay. Mr.?
I, I have an issue. I'd like to have an ordinance that basically says you can't smoke at all in Americana. Because, I'll tell you what's happening, we went to Cheesecake Factory, somebody next door asked if they could smoke, they brought in an ashtray, put it in front of that person, and the person just lit up.
Well, after the full ban, you know that.
It was your city manager. If I can, Scott will correct me, but with, if the ordinance is adopted and becomes effective as the majority seems to wish, uh, that wouldn't be able to happen at the Americana, because you would have prohibited outdoor dining, you would have prohibited the redevelopment area, you would have prohibited it within, within twenty feet of dining and in commercial establishments open to the public.
That's 1B.
Well, no, that would be an ordinance... Again, 1B is kind of a belts and suspenders approach to make sure that before the ordinance is adopted, it can be, smoking can be regulated at the Americana, and somebody can't try to jump to the loophole, that wait a minute, that's agency property, not Caruso's property and that sort of thing.
And that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about 1B.
Right. 1B is the belts and suspenders.
I think Mr. Yusefian's saying, any smoking in there, this, this one won't do that, it'll take the ordinance to follow, it would take care of it, so can we do the whole thing now in the Americana, I think that's what I'm saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to wait for 1A...